Calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call, please.
Ms. Angelola, Ms. Bayless here, Ms. Becker.
Here.
Ms. Hale.
Here.
Mr. Howkin.
Here.
Ms. Capella.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? For anyone joining us virtually, I'll give you a second to type that into the chat box if you wish. Okay, it does not look like we have any public comments, so we will move on to presentations.
All right, our first of two presentations this evening, our first one is the Diamond Award. So I'm going to ask Ms. Katie Greniason to please come up since she nominated a colleague from West Oak Intermediate School. Thank you, Katie.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I have had the pleasure of sharing a workplace, workspace with Kate this school year, and I continue to be amazed at her positivity and sparkle. I can think of many ways that Kate tries to connect with each student on a personal level, but one group of students that she has gone above and beyond with is our new EL arrivals. With all the unrest in Ukraine, our district has had an influx of Eastern European refugees. Kate has made, has been able to be the point person at our school with communicating with these families and students. Kate is a native Russian speaker and has been such an asset at this time for our students. One student in particular has had a hard time adjusting to school in the United States. He sees Kate as his safe person and often comes to our room to look for her multiple times a day. Kate has realized this need and has set up a scheduled meeting with him just to chat every day. No one has asked her to spend this extra time with him, but she saw the need and moved forward. We know the whole point is that our students feel safe and loved in order to learn. And Kate is meeting that need for our refugee population. I believe that the students feel a connection to her, knowing that she is a second language learner and understands the challenge of learning a new language. Providing students with mentors with similar backgrounds is vital, so they can see what success can look like for them. Our school is lucky to have her part of our team. Thank you, Kate.
Monica.
Do you have a translator? My husband. I just want to say thank you so much, and Katie, thank you so much. You've been amazing through this. And she, by the way, is my Oprah.
I just appreciate you so much, and I've just been so lucky working with, you know, amazing leadership and just having an amazing team to push me forward to really be my best every day. I'm stepping down, but most importantly, they pushed me forward, so thank you to them. And they're all diamonds in my eyes. And Katie, thank you so much for taking the time to recognize me. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kate, and thank you, Katie. Our second presentation tonight, it's a little bit lengthy. If you've had a chance to review it. However, we are really excited as a district leadership team and as a district staff to share the growth and the progress and the outcomes of our student assessments. So we are going to share, I'm going to introduce Mr., excuse me, Dr. Cunningham, who's going to then share the presentation this evening with the principals and Dr. Olson. So, Dr. Cunningham, it's all you.
Thank you so much again. So our first goal, our first priority and the first, excuse me, the first goal and the first priority is improve student group growth in English, language arts, and mathematics. And we had said that we were going to approach this from the lens of every student showing growth this year, positive movement, and seeing how we do fall to spring. We really believe strongly that we would target any way we can to see 100% of our students make positive movement fall to spring, and we have some pretty exciting data with that. I do want to emphasize there are some things we've learned along the way. One of those things being this idea of what's called trip skills. So one of the ways that we do our data reviews with STAR is what this is telling us about where we can focus to help our students move in or not. And so one thing we've learned from Renaissance this year is there's certain grade levels where the new skills are considered what's called a trip skill. What that means is it's a difficult new skill that requires new concepts and maybe you wouldn't necessarily grab from a previous grade level. And so if you look at K-10, it's the second highest because everything's new. In ELA, and actually in middle school becomes, there's a number of new trip skills that are introduced, seventh grade being the most difficult year for the STAR assessment. And STAR has, Renaissance feels very confident that math, if you remember the math assessment and the IAR assessment actually match pretty well. They all try to align their skills pretty closely. So we found that to be very helpful as we're working with teams on what skills to work on. And then we also have for math, you can see that grade four and five actually have the most, followed by grade seven, and then algebra one is at the very end, just to explain what A1 is. So that was, that's been very helpful as we've targeted specific skills, not just that you know there's more, but also exactly what skills was on, so we can make sure that we're emphasizing those at the right time and our scope and sequence. So that's just a little bit of what we've learned. As we present tonight, each principal is going to present their data from their building and including the number of students have grown from fall to winter. And we'll also be showing the spring to fall growth just to give a comparison, even though we are measuring fall to spring. So we have three tiers of instruction. We use green for tier one, yellow for tier two, red for tier three, green being everyone above the 30th percentile is considered tier one, tier two, 12th to 29th. Then tier three would be the first to 11th percentile. And then our STAR assessment, like we mentioned, is given three times a year in reading and math, grades K through eight. K also has an early literacy component. And then, but actually before I turn over to DLS, I am going to just quickly mention this again. I don't want to do that. I don't want to spoil it. All right. Okay, so I can go back, but they're really excited to share their data out. But the very end, you'll see this percentage and the reason it was, it can be deceptive with the number of kids that took the test or didn't, if they moved in or something. So we list the percent of kids that grew instead of the number of kids like everywhere else. With that, now I'll turn over to Dr. Burger.
Thank you, Dr. Cunningham. Much appreciated. So to start with DLS, we are looking at the ELA assessments. And as you recall, we have two types of assessments in the early childhood setting, one of them being early literacy for those foundational language skills, such as the alphabet, phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, and comprehension. And then as our students develop more within the English language art skills, we're looking at the STAR reading portion, which has to do with the developmental skills and applications, such as author, literary, argument, vocabulary, and comprehension. So as we look at our first, is someone moving?
I'm moving. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. So as we look at our first round of kindergarten STAR ELA data, this was the first year that we started from the very beginning with our kindergarteners taking all three of the assessment cycles. In previous years, we had waited until the winter, I'm sorry, until the spring to see how much our students were comprehending with it. We decided this year as a team that we wanted to start from the very beginning so that we could track their growth and progress at a much closer scale. All of our students are taking early literacy only in fall and winter. And then students who are able to take the ELA, which is more of the reading exam, will take that in the spring. And with 98% growth from fall to winter, we are confident we will have many, if not all, kindergarteners moving on to the ELA assessment. So when we look at the comparison of tiers, for tier one, we went from 32 students in the fall to 51 in the winter. In tier two, nine students in the fall to six in the winter. And in tier three, 22 in the fall to six in the winter. So we saw significant growth for kindergarten ELA. And then looking at kindergarten math, again, first time, we're on the three-tier assessment, I'm sorry, the three-time assessment cycle. For our students, we saw 89% growth in math from fall to winter, 46 children in the fall in tier one compared to the 49 in the winter. Tier two, we had 10 students in the fall compared to 11 in the winter. And in tier three, we had nine in the fall and four in the winter. So here, when we see the increase in tier two, we always have to remember that's a positive increase because we saw a decrease in tier three. So we saw students moving up to both tier two and tier one from tier three. And then when we look at the ELA scores for both first and second grade, because of reading development for those students, we had some that took only the early literacy and some that took the reading, and that was with their continued development with the ELA skills. We looked at this in comparison to how much growth was made last spring up to this fall, which we had already expected. It was probably going to be a relatively small percentage because that was over the summer. Some students involved in summer school, some students very active in academics while home, some students enjoying the sunshine in the pool and maybe not so academic, which we completely understand. So when we look at the comparison of increase, spring to fall, we had only 17% of our students show growth compared to fall to winter. We had 88% in first grade for the early lit. And then when we look at the actual STAR reading, 24% spring to fall compared to the 86% fall to winter. And we have to remember when we look at these two comparisons, the early lit is that beginning foundational English language arts assessment compared to the actual STAR test, which is more of the pure reading and comprehension. So we had a significant number of students not only move within each of the tiers, but move to the harder assessment in comparison. And then when we look at second grade, we had 50% of our students go from spring to fall compared to 83% show growth fall to winter. Very few students in comparison taking that early lit for second grade. Most of our students are taking that second grade STAR reading. 48% increase spring to fall compared to the 88% fall to winter. So we saw significant growth for first and second grade as well. And then for math, when we look at that comparison, spring to fall was 53% increase compared to the 86% fall to winter. And then for second grade, 28% spring to fall compared to 88% fall to winter. We are significantly excited at DLS to see such high increases in student improvement, and much of that has to do with different components that we put in place for this school year. So when we looked at the data, we were able to answer the question, what is this exactly telling us? And it's that we are seeing significant growth across each grade level and across both subjects. So different pieces that we put into place, such as our new building schedule and the design of how we're using our team meetings to follow the, what's called the PLC, professional learning communities. We have more structured meetings that one, once a month, we're focusing on ELA, once a month on math, once a month on SCL. And at the end of every month, we're going back and looking at data, and we're tracking the progress and how our students are doing, collaborating as teams with our interventionists, with our coaches. Dr. Cunningham joins us very often for data. Dr. Sharmel Lewis joins us also. So we're all able to collaborate and talk about, now that we have the data, what are we going to do about it? And we're making some great changes within our day-to-day practices and also with the tools and resources that we're using. This was also an incredibly strong foundation for our kindergarten because they knew exactly where the students were performing right at the start of the school year on the more formal assessment versus just what was going on in the classroom. All of this has helped us to strengthen our MTSS process, which is really thinking about how we're differentiating our instruction in the different tiers that our students perform at. Our intervention team is, had examined every single student, fall to winter, every single data point on the STAR, to really determine, were there students that no longer needed intervention? Were there students that needed intervention, but in a different format? Were there students that perhaps receiving multiple interventions, but it was too much pull-out of class time and needed more inclusion and in-core instruction? We also are collaborating all the time, comparing data to really determine those specific deficits. We're doing a lot more push-in service, both with intervention and special education, progress monitoring, targeted skills on a more consistent basis, and really using that data-driven decision-making to see the incredible growth that we are seeing. And without further ado, Mr. Preble.
Nicely done, Dr. Burger. All right. Thank you, Dr. Burger. So the success continues, and I think you're going to see that as a theme for the night. But as we look into our ELA scores in third through fifth grade, our students have showed a growth rate of from 50% in the fall to 80% in the winter. For a third grade, fourth grade went from 43 to 80%, and our fifth grade went from 55 to 62%. The significant parts of this is that if you look at our tier three in all three grade levels, there's a significant decrease in the number of our tier three students. So not only are we moving students growth-wise, we are actually shifting them through the tiers as well, which is, which is a great thing to see. So across the board, just to summarize it real quick, we went from 35 to 41 in tier one for grade three, 12 to 14 in tier two, and we dropped 27 to 16. As Dr. Burger had mentioned in her piece, that that tier two that increase is an okay thing to see because we're seeing that shift out of tier three. They're going north into tier two, which is great. Over in the fourth grade, we saw an increase in tier one from 49 to 54, a decrease from tier two from 12 to 10, and a big drop from 24 to 14 in our tier three kiddos. Fifth grade, much of the same story, 37 to 41 in tier one, 18 to 21 in tier two, and 25 down to 17 in tier three for our reading. When we look at our math, it looks even better. So our third grade, we showed our growth from our kids that were 51% of our kids that moved in the fall for up to 85, 34 all the way up to 83 in fourth grade. And in one class alone, it was 100%, so that was pretty cool to see. And then fifth grade, it was 43 to 76%. And one of the things I wanted to bring up, I know I said in one class we saw 100%, but all our kids go to different math classes, so it's not like one roster, you know. It's, it's, this is success for everybody on the team, and everybody is helping move these kids. But again, we look at our tier movement. In third grade, we went from 45 to 51, tier one, tier two in third grade, 12 down to 10, and we reduced our tier three kiddos from 15 to 10. Fourth grade was 47 up to 55 in tier one, 19 down to 16 in tier two, 20 all the way down to eight in tier three. Fifth grade, 33 up to 41 in tier one, 17 down to 55 in tier two, and 30 got cut a third off down to 20. And so what we're seeing there was some of those tier three shifts. If our tier three is reducing and our tier two is going down as well, we're potentially seeing some leapfrogging. And maybe some of our high-tier threes are actually making it to the low-tier ones, which is a remarkable accomplishment. But one of the things, and if we go to the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about, what is it telling us that obviously a large majority of our students are making growth in each grade? And our current action steps are working. So what are those action steps? What are we, what have we been doing? What are we going to continue? We're going to identify those students not demonstrating growth, reexamine and revise interventions. The nice thing about that point right there is that when you are not looking at 50 to 60% of your kids and trying to figure out what to do, we're looking at 17 to 20% of our kids. The numbers are smaller. We can identify some things a lot easier because it's such a, it's a significantly smaller number of students that we have to try to figure out, okay, everyone else is working for the majority of kids, where do we go with this select few? I will review our SIP goals to continue our success and address new opportunities. And we're continuing that math coach support in all tiers. And that's been really helpful with the pilot into the two new math programs. We continue our reading instruction with the push-in model and co-teaching support. So that's, that's new for this year. We would have kids always pulled out for our reading support. We would have kids that were pulled out of the room all the time, hardly ever being in the classroom with that tier one support. We made that shift this year where we have more push-in, we have more co-teaching. There are times when there's two and sometimes three adults in the room working with kids on reading, and we're seeing this pay off. And then we realize those opportunities of specific supports for students not showing growth. So again, those numbers are smaller, so we can focus in on them more and figure that puzzle piece out even more. Will they continue our success? Mr. Peterson?
All right. Well, thank you here, Mr. Preble. I set the, at the middle school here, we, you know, as Dr. Cunningham has already mentioned, the, the number of trip scores are quite larger in the, in the middle school level. So our kids are really at that phase in their, in their life where they're learning a lot of new skills. So, you know, the, the data that we see is just a little bit more modest. It's hard to beat Diamond Lake here in Wallace, but, but also very encouraging as well. So kind of jumping into this, and I'll kind of explain a deeper dive that we did after we pulled this data. But overall here, like I said, the, the last, the last data meeting, so we've had a lot of kids kind of coming in. Really, we've been, we've been taking in a lot more kids than we've been, than have been leaving. So some of these kids are coming to us brand new and really just showing a lot of growth in itself. But overall here, sixth grade kind of held steady at that tier one level with 54. Really, last year when we reported on that, anything over 50 was pretty rare when talking about kids in that tier one level. So definitely very encouraging. Lost a couple, lost three to, you know, to that tier two, and then gained one in that, that tier three level. What was quite surprising when we started pulling this data over the summer is how much kids grew over the summer here. You, you would expect that summer slide, especially in math, because they haven't used it for three months. And I'll get to that slide here next. But sixth grade was, was our lowest, at 43% from spring to fall, but then grew 20% from fall to winter. So that was a kudos to them and kudos to our teachers as well. They've been working very, very hard. Other news here is seventh grade, we saw a nice gain of seven at that tier one level. Really, our tier two level really, really condensed from 23 to 13. So, you know, almost, almost half of our kids moved to that tier one level, and then we gained one at that tier three. But also a gain of 9% from spring to fall, fall to winter, so definitely very, very encouraging there. Eighth grade, I mean, they have shown a lot of gain, not me, in, in, seen at the tier one level and tier two, but more, more of their growth overall, and I'll explain that here in just a little bit. But on tier one, they, you know, we gained six kids into that area. We, we lessened our tier two by three from 27 to 24. It kind of held steady at that tier three level. But then again, once, once again, here we jump from that spring to fall, to fall to winter, of 7%, which was good. Now I move over to STAR math, and this is where our sixth grader is going a little crazy here. They, you know, they, the tier one level, we gained, we gained six kids that moved over. We condensed our tier twos, and then we kind of held steady to gain a couple during our winter. But if you look here at that spring to fall, fall to winter, I, and I double-checked this three times to make sure this is correct here. But we went from 43% showing growth over the summer, which was surprising in itself, to 86, really doubling that amount from fall to winter here. So they, they got an upgrade here for, you know, for, in December. Seventh grade moved from, you know, we gained one in our tier one groupings, lost, you know, gained two in that, that tier two, and there was, and you can see with that tier three, they lost four, so they, they moved up to that tier two level. So that's why we see that gain in there. Once again, we moved up in a percentage that students have grown by 22%, which is great. Eighth grade, we gained two with our tier ones, we lost six, and, and we gained six. And this is probably the one, the one red flag that I see is that, you know, with that tier three level at the eighth grade, you know, they, they gained six. It looks like that, that lower tier two kind of fell into that, that upper tier three level. So we'll be looking at that with our interventionists here soon. But, but then again, here, the number of students that grew in that class is still very strong at 10%. So me and Dr. Cunningham doing a deeper dive into this, you know, we were looking at student growth percentages. This is something that went away last year, but really compares how well kids are moving compared to their national average. And, and out of the six tests we administered, five of them are showing that we are moving at a faster pace than the national average. So, you know, closing the gap and really kind of moving kids as a whole here. So definitely very exciting, something very, very, you know, just, something just to, to celebrate within our, our school, within our staff, within our kids. All right, so action steps, you know, what is our data telling us? We have increased student growth from spring STAR, spring and also far STAR test. Students have shown growth in that higher-order thinking. We want to definitely, we definitely want to focus on those tier threes here that are, that are still in that range, but they are showing growth within that range. So we're just trying to get them over the hump from that tier three to tier two. And we are continuing to write in, in a lot of different classes. We're employing the, the writer's workshop. You know, we're continuing our pacing with our, our math. We're continuing that, that level literacy, you have to reinforce our, our intervention. And we're seeing some, some good things, being that this is year two, our teachers understand it more and really are kind of firing on all cylinders with the implementation of that program. We're, we are pushing in with tier two math during advisory periods. So kids that aren't in choir or band, they're getting that, that, that tier two math intervention, which is just a supplement to what they're learning in tier three as well. EL students, we are also incorporating the, the LLI program. We are studying on the curriculum-based measures with our SPED students. And as we continue to progress, monitor them every, every two weeks. And then we're doing a lot of cross-curricular work along subject areas. Yeah, I think something that we've really brought to attention is that reading and writing and math isn't just the math teacher's or the ELA teacher's job. It's, it's our, it's our whole building. And, and you know, really, we are, we're, we're, we are employing that claim evidence reasoning in a lot of different subject areas besides ELA or, or math there. So, you know, hoping, you know, the more practice, the more, the, the more we can build those skill levels here with, with all of our kids. So now I believe I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Cunningham.
Thank you. This has been a great process to unpack what students exactly are growing in. Now, as we use that student growth percentile in the past, we would be really excited if we were beating the national average, but this approach has allowed us to really focus in on individual cases more than we had thought we were doing in the past. This one is showing, if we remember from the fall, all the bears been interested in how our tier one students perform. And so really, I just circled as an example. So this is kind of divided by each grade level of fall and winter. You can see that some students in kindergarten got, got to mess around a little bit with the second level of the test that we won't report on until the spring when kindergarteners take it. We like to see the top two colors grow. So that blue is any students that are scoring above the 90th percentile on their scores. And then 75th to 89th, it's always nice to see the top color shift more. So I just circled an example of first grade where you would see the top, and then the kids in the 90th percentile would grow. And then similarly in math, just to give you another example, here's in sixth grade. Another group is circled. It's nice to see when that section grows. And it's been a good way for us to look at how we enrich and what we're doing and to help advance all students with some of those different skills. To allow them to move to the next level and what their score may be, or find out, maybe it's not in our scope and sequence, but it might be covered up before that test. And with that, over to Dr. Olson.
All right. So this year in the special education department, we decided to look in our K through five, uh, grade levels. And really look at our curriculum based measures. So we use STAR and use a curriculum based measure, which really measures students' achievement and growth. In short, about a minute to two minute, um, quick assessments in targeted content areas. So we actually looked at each student's IEP goal. And then found the assessment for each of those students and then measured their progress. And we started this in October. We learned that we needed to find a different measure for our middle school. And we will be talking about that here shortly of what we're doing for next steps for that. But I'm going to go ahead and review our progress, which is also exciting. So, um, in kindergarten and as we know, students have IEPs for a variety of different reasons. So this is focusing only on the students that have IEPs, that have IEP goals that are for, um, reading or literacy skills. And we had five students in kindergarten and then actually all five of them grew, which is awesome. And we actually see that through all of them that we're seeing a hundred percent growth. Um, and we are doing these evaluations every two weeks, uh, kind of bi-weekly so that we can get a good grasp. And really make any changes if we're seeing that students aren't growing to make sure that, okay, you know what? They're not growing. So we're going to change some of our instructional practices. As of right now, we're making some really nice gains where we're not seeing that. But when we do, we are actually talking about it at our weekly sped meetings to then make those changes. For math, um, you're also, I'm sorry, for third grade, fourth grade and fifth grade. What you'll also see is we're seeing the same thing of that growth for ELA that we're coming on strong. We're seeing growth in all of our students. And then for math, there we go, for kindergarten through second grade. Um, we had one student, um, in kindergarten who actually was gone for a period of time. And they came back and they showed regression, which is typical with students that have different disabilities because they need that repetition. So we will work with that student and I'm hoping that we can go ahead and get those skills back to where they were and, um, see that growth again. Then for third and fourth grade and fifth grade, we again are seeing that hundred percent growth. So this has been a really exciting time for us as a special education department to look at this data and say, wow, what we're doing is actually working and meeting our students' needs. And it's been cool to see and actually have it documented of their growth. For our next steps, um, we are, you know, we're seeing that we're seeing an overall math and ELA growth. And that the support of pushing in our minutes instead of pulling out the students and removing them from the general education classroom. Is actually supporting them and showing growth. So we're going to continue with that. Additionally, we're going to continue to review that data. And then for our sixth through eighth grade, we are looking at, um, something called EZCBM, which has more, uh, curriculum based measures. For reading comprehension and math above the third grades that we can continue to challenge our students and document their growth.
So with the entry, we call this round where this was not part of goal one. However, uh, the board has been asking for some time to, um, have some information and talk through dual language in our programming a little bit. So, uh, at the middle school level, we agreed that we would pilot all, giving all four of the apple assessment areas this year. And just to explain this test a little bit, um, there are four areas that are tested. Essentially it's the four modes of communication, reading, writing, listening and speaking. Our EL students are used to taking access tests and this is very similar to that. So the each test will take about forty-five minutes. They took this back in, uh, early December. And we actually, our school reports for individual students, we have as well to go on. Hopefully we'll get those out in the next couple of weeks to families. But, uh, the apple assessment is currently required for incoming Stevenson students. We only have to take one or two tasks each year depending on which two they want. There are ten levels and it goes from novice levels one to four, and there's a score scale in between that between one and ten. So if you're a novice, if you're halfway through novice level one, you get a one point five, for example. Intermediate, one through five, and then advanced level A one to be the highest you can get. The questions are in English and responses in Spanish of the dual language team. I wanted to make sure I said that to you. Cause they were on the, everyone on the board to know there's a lot of translinguaging going on. We need to be able to go between two languages, uh, kind of neutrally. And that was an important point for the teachers to emphasize. So we gave this just a couple of overall findings and then I'll show you some of the data. We found that dual language program students performed above all foreign languages. I mean by that. In the middle school only, we have Spanish one that starts in seventh and eighth grade. So that, I don't know, we had to kind of show a little bit, but our dual students are doing better than them. I think that was ex, expectation. We have emphasized grammar skills. We made that shift last year at the middle school. We basically are doing Spanish two plus literature at the middle, at the middle school level. And we have found that is paying off. And then dual language students, we found are very comfortable in the listening domain. They scored extremely well. Uh, native Spanish speakers tend to be stronger in speaking and listening than our non-native speakers. And then we found that if a lot of our dual students are also, um, ours are accelerated program students. And if those students test well, they tended to test wellness, this as well. And actually what's nice is it gives you really nice bar graphs. We can show each student's score. So we can check for a bell curve where outliers are and who those were. So just to show you some, some of the graphs, um, and I, I guess you can see it a little bit behind me. We did not, I didn't pull dual language students out of sixth grade because virtually everyone's a dual language student in sixth grade. Except for three newcomers and their scores didn't change anything. So the dot is the national average, uh, in this domain. Um, and so they, and then it lists below, for example, the national average is a five point six, uh, for intermediate level one. And then we were averaging a novice level four, four point seven. Um, and then it works across with writing, listening and reading. And then for seventh and eighth grade, we had to start pulling the dual students out because now the Spanish one students join. And so the black dot is the dual language students. So you can see, um, they're above the bar graphs, which is all students. And then in order to show their score, and this is the first time, if we need to fix the presentation, we can, you know, in the future, for the future. But we put the dual language scores in red below. So for example, um, the national average was an intermediate level three, seven point one, which is actually higher than the eighth grade average. Um, and then ours was an intermediate level one, five point six. Um, and it works across that way, um, all the way through where you can see where ours are, what's the national average. And then we outs, and then the ones above in black are for all students, including foreign language. Then looking at eighth grade, uh, we get very close to catching, and this is great because this includes our students at intervention, tier two, tier three. This includes students that join our dual language programming that, um, maybe if, whether it's later on for that are coming from another country. So really pleased with this. You can see in eighth grade, we catch the national average and personal listening and speaking is our speaking was right there. Our writing grows significantly. We've started to emphasize that in the middle school. Uh, and then interpretive listening, um, is an intermediate level one. And then we're at the same level intermediate level two, very close, uh, for interpretive reading. So again, this is the first time really, I, I think that we've shown this kind of thing to the board. It was really nice for us to look at to get our kind of our first, we had a really nice, robust conversation from kindergarten all the way through eighth grade of what this might mean. And so we have decided we will give this once, uh, next year at the middle school level again. The reason it takes so long in order to do it more than one time. And so we are deciding if we think it's appropriate to go grades three through five. They, uh, the three, four test is slightly different. It basically just makes it a little bit more elementary friendly. And then the fifth grade too, we take this exact same test. K two, there is not an offering for it and any vendors that have tests that test this type of thing don't offer K two. So we do use our F and P Spanish to track how they're doing. Plus we have some, uh, phonemic awareness and dictato and other pieces we use. But the kindergarten through K, the K two team found this very valuable to think about what we're emphasizing and what we're not. So just a little piece there. So, and then this last one is just, the bar graphs are actually useless. I realized this after I put this up, they tell us nothing because they include our foreign language students in seventh and eighth grade. Uh, so just they're there for color. And then you can see are, are all students, then you can see and our dual language is in red. And you can see there's a progression, uh, in all of them. I guess in listening, technically they hold a five point six in both. But other, and, uh, actually they're basically from sixth grade to eighth, we're seeing movement, which is wonderful. That's what we want to see and we know that's happening K through eight. So with that, to reflect a little bit on this data, uh, after school programming is continuing for math and reading. That has been extremely, we believe the correlation is very strong, uh, because especially, uh, this is happening K five. And virtually all those students are showing positive growth. I mean, Diamond Lake, when it gets to like ninety-eight percent, we're talking about one student. So one, that one student has a lot of pressure on them, this thing. So that also we're, we're doing a great job with our standard space report cards and science and social studies. They're done. They're going to go on their report card for next year. All of our specials are done. They're being reviewed. So we're on track for that. And the middle school begin that process because they've been working on the unit designs. LLI is essentially referring to a reading intervention that we're using for our students, K through eight. Uh, and we are working on a new writing curriculum we've selected, which is F and P writing. And then math, uh, IOT would like to pick that in March at a March IOT meeting. And we'll also be reviewing our standard space report cards to get feedback from the team. And our instructional coaches have been extremely integral in this process. They've helped teams speak the language of assessment, of teaching, of learning. And so some of the things they're working on are listed there. These are the same things from the fall because we believe they've, they're bearing good fruit. Um, I think I would just to highlight their data analysis support has been huge. And then what do you do with that data and the instructional practice has been very important. And then, uh, every team has gotten so strong at their data management, understanding exactly what skills we need to work on with students. That includes the social emotional, which, uh, Dr. Wilson's going to talk about in a couple of weeks. So since we are doing so wonderful, uh, at least, well, we are making progress, I should say. We are interested, just like we're holding our students accountable and a lot of the measures, we would like to hold ourselves accountable. And so we were looking at what have we been working on over the past five or six years? And what would be a good measure to use? So, uh, the Marzano group, for those that are familiar with the educational world, that's one of those like big research names. Um, and they, they put out some of the best materials out there. They've created a framework called high reliability schools. The argument is the only thing that school districts do reliably are buses, which is debatable, uh, and paychecks for teachers. That's it. Everything else is, you can't always say every classroom, every classroom, you're seeing the same thing. So, um, this process allows us to hold ourselves accountable to see, are we really building the culture we think? This is probably our strongest area. Uh, do we really have effective teaching in every classroom? Can we verify that our, uh, is our coaching program paying off? Do we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum? Are our units, our report cards, do they make sense? Are they where they need to be? Are they addressing the skills that were being assessed on, we presented? And standards referenced reporting, uh, is, it's, that's referring to standards based, this small caveat difference is in standards referenced. You can tell a student, you didn't, you got a two and then you keep it moving. Standards based is if you hit a four or three, we suddenly change exactly what you're doing and you get to move the next skill immediately. And that's where competency base comes in. So if you get to level three, you are a high reliability school and it's a national recognition. It's a big deal. There are no districts that are highly likely districts yet. And so we are very excited about the possibility of us going for this. Um, it's, our staff is motivated by it. They're very excited about it. And so with that, some of these require surveys that go out. And so there will be a survey that will go out to families, um, that it, it will look very similar to some of the other things we've done with parent engagement and such. We are going to launch that tomorrow. And then, um, we do lagging indicators, which is a lot of our other data and practices we upload. The principals have to film themselves by eight or 10 times. And then, um, we get feedback from outside people to look at what we're doing to see if we're, if we're on the right track. So we want to make the board aware of that because, uh, you'll get an email tomorrow and you'll know what in the world, want to know what this is. That's what it is. It's really, uh, it, it's an accountability piece for us to make sure we are doing it and doing it. We want to, we want to do with excellence. So with that, questions and feedback time.
This together, um, I think it's really good to have a visual on, on, on the data here. And, um, wonderful to see. The increase in tier one students, the percent of students who are achieving growth. I mean, really, really nice work by all of you as a leadership team and all of the staff that you lead. So, uh, thank you for putting this together and, and, and sending that in. Good job.
Um, I'll echo that. Thank you very much for putting this together. You did exactly what we wanted, which was to see what percentage of our students are growing. And, uh, sort of looking at it on a student by student basis and, and greatly appreciated, putting greatly appreciate that you put it together. And that we have such a high percentage of students growing. A question I had was when we look at tiers one, two and three. Is there some sort of goal or best practice as to what percentage of students? You know, are in tier one versus the other two, since the other two require some type of either moderate or more intensive intervention?
I, I think if we had to look at a norm, it's typically if you can get your tier one to about eight, you could say sixty to eighty-five percent. It's a big range. Eighty-five is really a nice place to be. Uh, and then you think a fifteen percent, that's why you could play with those percentages a little bit in tier two. And then a five percent or less down to one, one to five for tier three, if you want to think of it that way. That's the ideal place. And so, um, uh, districts will do that are really serious about competency bases. They will shift where each tier is to give an example. What Stevenson's done is they've made accelerated ELA tier one because so many kids qualified for it. They shifted and said, that's not, that's not like a level four. This is a tier one. And if you're not in it, then Janet is considered a tier two and they're providing extra supports for you. It makes sense. So it, it really, you look at the makeup of your students, but typically sixty to eighty-five, eighty-five is a great number to hit. Ten percent tier two, you will, we like to see the pyramid or ice cream cone. If you want to think about the food groups, you want to use tier three sparingly. It's like sugars. So I guess that'd be the way to describe it. It's probably a terrible analogy, uh, but there you go.
No, thank you. Uh, so right now, you know, just get glancing at it. We're probably what around sixty percent?
Yeah, we are.
Do we have, do, do you have all of the resources you need to, to help, um, bring the other forty percent? To help provide the intervention that the other forty percent are going to get in some way or another?
Uh, and Mr. Rogers, do you want to? Well, I'm just going to run the resources. And that's what, that's again, I would say this, I think that.
Are there challenges to you?
Yeah.
Uh, of working with and inter, intervention and intervening with up to forty percent of students?
Gosh, what a thoughtful question. You know, I think that. We are very encouraged by the amount of, amount of students that grew at all tiers. With our current investment in both instructional coaching and the way that we are using our interventionist to push in. So in terms, we don't think we've ever had a conference, other than we would love to have, of course, every kid would benefit from one to one. I mean, that would be the idea. Everybody gets one to one instruction. We really are pleased with that. I would say what the data allows to see is when we're doing it this way, is what do we do with the students that didn't move? And can we effectively address the skills of who we have? And we believe we can. So any resources we use, it's how we're using it. Like we have phenomenal staff. It's a matter of targeting the skills we need to do, if that makes sense. That being said, we'll always take more, there will never be a no to that. Um, but there were no, that's, I appreciate that. I probably would say we would talk more about it as, if we find out there are resources that we need to engage and need to.
And really that's what I was getting at. Other, I should have said it. Are there specific resources that, that, uh, that you would be looking for?
I, I think that we would probably continue to discuss that as a team and, and talk and present those to the board. Especially as we get some of our programming updates, our goals and priorities. I, I would, I'm not prepared to answer that question right now, if that makes sense.
No, thank you very much.
Again, I want to piggyback. Congratulations on all that hard work. And, you know, we all see it day to day in our homes. We see the hard work that the kids are bringing home and what they're talking about. I was thinking with an increase of EL students from Ukraine, Russia, wherever they're coming from. Are they automatically tier three for you? Because that to me would make sense that they would need the most intervention. And they would probably be the group that would exit very quickly, looking at next year's data. So, and I, other districts that I know, those kids get EL services right away, intensive EL services. They're tier two, tier three, and that could, that could show in your data. But then the year later, they, those are kids who quickly exit tier three from my experience, but I'm just. But then the year later, they, those are kids who quickly exit tier three from my experience, but I'm just wondering if they are tier three kids.
Yeah, I'll have Kurt jump in because he decided to hit that competency moment on that mic. Uh, you know, that depends on how strong the students are in their home language. And so if they aren't going to show that kind of growth over the next year, are they tier three right away for you? Or I guess like Kurt, I can go and answer that.
I mean, sure, for, for my building and the assumption would be that it would be across the board, but we were just having this discussion and interventions meeting last week. As far as when we're looking at our M T S S process that we're hashing out and. Um, when we look at how we're going to prioritize students for certain interventions. Yes, they are tier three. So it's like we, we prioritize E L first. The newcomers are on top of that. So, yeah, so the, the, the. Is my staff loves it when I say the short answer to your question is yes, absolutely. They're tier three. Now we'll see how that moves as we, as we do this. Um, we've had newcomers in the past. Most of the time it's, it's from, uh, Mexico or Spanish speaking countries. So it's a little bit. Easier to deal with and easier to assess what we need to do. Um, the challenge with. Um, what we're seeing now, especially with, you know, the handful of kiddos that we're getting from Ukraine and things like that is how do we? Um, utilize what we have now. Obviously you saw tonight, my building is very fortunate to have somebody like Ms. Kay in my building. Who, who can, who can help us with that. But the, the work that the teachers are putting in. To create translation and, and using our technology that we have to do that, um, has, has really been paying off. But yes, I would say the answer to your question is they're absolutely tier three.
I would be anxious to see a year from now, how many of those tier three E L newcomers are now in tier one or tier, you know, tier two.
Um, first of all, this was wonderful. I know everybody's been saying it, but I know how much time it takes to put all this together. And I think our students and our community really appreciate that, um, we're not just. Gathering the data, but we're really analyzing it. And so I want to just say thank you because I think it's one thing to get. A bunch of results, but really taking those ti- the time that's necessary. Um, we're, our, our students are very fortunate for that. Because I think we, um, as a school, I think we all can see. That, um, students falling through the cracks is very difficult. I think our cracks are very small. And so I wanted to thank you all for that. Um, I guess I just had a question regarding the, um, growth in the, um, middle school. And this is just sort of a general question. Um, oh, the other thing I wanted to mention is that the, um, seeing the trip skills. I thought was really, really interesting. Um, I think it adds a lot of context to the ups and downs that. We see the community sees when kids come home with these scores because seeing that certain years. Which I think we all might know from our own experience, you know, the jump in what the expectations are, I think was really helpful. Personally, as I was looking at the growth to also sort of, I kept going back and forth to see where the ebbs and flows were, if you will. Um, you know, once we get to middle school, I'm looking at you, Mr. Peterson, survivor, um. How much growth would you say, maybe I'll, I'll rephrase. It, it was a little bit more even keeled, you know, there was a less ups and downs or, or huge bumps. Um, is that really in your experience to be expected, given that these are our oldest students? Um, obviously everybody can grow some, some of these students might be kind of, you know, on any given day. You know, they're up a couple of points, they're down a couple of points. Um, is, is that something that as these students are nearing the end of their. Elementary school journey would be expected? I mean, obviously at the beginning to see these massive, you know, growth. We want to see that because things are new and they're taking it all in. But, you know, just with the middle school, it's just a, a, just a question. Um.
Yeah, absolutely here. And I think that's a great question. Um, you know, and, and speaking with our staff, there, there are a million variables that, that go into how that kid is feeling. As they're taking their test. Um, you know, one of the things that I said was, was, was a red flag was our tier three eighth grade kids. And. Yeah, I think, I think immediately, yeah, my, my mind went to, you know, what is the environment that they're testing in? You know, not only what are they walking in the door feeling like, what kind of night they had, what kind of morning, whatever it is, but, um. I, I've never really liked the idea of, of our kids, uh, testing in our cafeteria. But just due to the size, uh, of the class, uh, and just the, the prep, the, the different rooms in our building, it just made sense that one of our, our bigger classes went in there. So what we are going to be doing moving forward is we're going to, we're going to try getting really creative and. I, I've assigned that to Mr. Feiburger here to, uh, to get us out of the cafeteria, just because I feel like. It's, it's harder to focus. It's hard to concentrate. You're in those, you're in those like, uh, circular, uh, lunchroom tables. I want them in a classroom environment. So we, hopefully we can get them to focus and concentrate more on. One of the things, you know, you know, so obviously there's a lot of variables that go into, you know, what, what, what's going on with the kid and. And at the end of the day, I want, you know, I want the kids to care and I want them to, to put something into this. And we, we got to get into some motivational issues. And we're going to probably see that this spring. Uh, one of the things that we've implemented, uh, every month is our, our monthly assemblies. And, uh, you know, we were, we were graced by one of our celebrity speakers last, uh, last month. It was just a fun time. Um, you know, we're, we do students in months, we do positive referrals, we do some games, but also I want them, I've, I've also showed them data. And what we've done is we, we've come up with an academic, an academic challenge in regards to, you know, what, what grade level is showing the most growth? You know, who's, who's progressing, uh, individually and that, and that counts towards their grade level. Uh, and whatever, whatever grade has shown the most growth, um, percentage wise, those are the ones that, you know, we're, we're going to have some kind of, of incentive in May. Um, and I said, I don't know what that incentive is, but, but we're going to ask the student masters, we're going to ask the, ask the kids, what do you want to do? You want to go to the movie? You want to have like an all, all afternoon game, whatever it is, um, just trying to offer that, that. That, that motivation that, hey, this is important to us because we put a lot of weight in this and, and we hope this is important to you. And. What we really saw with, with, especially with our eighth grade kids is after they took that, that, that test in December. You know, we, we need kids going on vacation, you know, for long periods of time. And you know, just it's around the way, you know, the holiday season. It's been a bunch of kids going back to their teacher and, and I don't have anything, uh, quantifiable here, but it's. Always kids going back like, hey, Mr. Goldberg, Dr. Brown, can I, can I retest here? But that, but that's what we want though, because they, they knew that, hey, maybe for whatever reason, that morning they fell flat. But hey, I know I can do better and I, and I want to show it versus, uh, it's just that start exam again. So. You know, the, the grade level challenges, we, we've gotten into trimester challenges as well, where, uh, it was based upon grades, attendance, behavior. Or we're just finishing up with our second trimester, uh, challenge here this, this, uh, Friday. So. We have like some fun incentives for them in a couple of weeks as well. But at the end of the day, we want to, we want to limit the amount of. Variables that are going to take away from their scores and try to incentivize and have fun with it as well. Because it is important to us and we want this to be important for them too. Yeah.
Okay.
I was going to just add, and, and as they, that's one huge element they're addressing, but the teams are also discussing. Uh, what are the skills? But let's say, well, look at those trip skills. What are the ones that maybe we're emphasizing or not? And so. There was a conversation and I'm just looking at some of the seventh grade ones. Forgot about my conventions and range of readings. It says analyze and explain the characteristics and devices employed by types of informational texts, including literary nonfiction, like essays and biographies. And argument to begin to establish interpretive framework for understanding. And so being able to understand the different texts. And how to interpret the meaning of the author and different, and informational, which it's a lot of literature until. You know, so it's a question we start talking about K eight when we introduce that. Um. It's a great conversation because the teachers will say, well, some of our students are very strong at this and some of our students are still working on some of the bits, some of the. The, the foundational understanding, they can answer correctly, but the implication is where we have to build. And so that's the convert, that's where they look at the instruction. And what they have to do in just their unit design, if that makes sense. I mentioned that because you were, you like those as much as I do. That's good.
Um, well, one other thing I just wanted to add, um, it, it's really great to see that the apple is being brought in. Um, because I know in the high school, they, there, there's a very big push for the seal of biliteracy. Um, so, um, just to know that our students are getting a taste of that, not just an entrance. To see where they place, let's say in Stevenson or Mundeline, but actually thinking even further to say, hey, I want to have a seat. I want to be recognized as having that seal of biliteracy and that is the exam that they take. I know at Stevenson, that is, um, the, the exam. So having that, being comfortable with that and kind of seeing it, um, I think really can propel those dual students to continue. Um, with Spanish and to hopefully take the higher level classes and maybe even be. Given, you know, earn that seal of biliteracy on their diploma, which would be great. So thank you for that as well.
That's great. They had, um, I would say the teach, the students have really enjoyed it because the teachers gave into it. I don't mean like they love taking the test, but they like getting the feedback. A lot of them would lack confidence. Uh, in middle school, there's a lot of, I don't want to speak in Spanish because if I get it wrong, I look really silly. And to do the speaking section, they see how they did and the teacher gives them the feedback and the conference with each student has been really powerful for them.
I had a question that kind of piggybacks a little bit on what you were just talking about with the trip skills with, um, Elisa's question. When I was looking at the trip skills and I was looking at the middle school data. I wondered what impact do you think COVID had on those kids with those trip skills? And are there skills that you're seeing, maybe now that you're looking at this data that maybe were missed or were not? Um, kind of honed in on because of COVID? Because I would think that, that, you know, these three grade levels clearly had a big disruption in their education. And with you seeing kind of that cascade of those skills, um, I'm just wondering if you're able to see kind of the impact there? And if that is kind of informing any, um, different interventions or strategies or, um, ways of teaching going forward.
Yeah, absolutely here. And you know, every, every. Month here, we, we do what we call a data dive, uh, P L C data dive where, you know, what, what's nice about Star is it, we breaks it down into the different sub skills and. And, uh, what, what we have looked at here is the, the different trip skills. But, but just also the, the skills that they are, they're doing well in and the, and the ones that, that they need to grow in. Um, you know, like I said, your critical thinking skills have, have really, have really gone up. Um, you know, there, there's other skills though that, that are lacking. Uh, you know, I don't know if it's something that is completely attributed, you know, attributed to COVID. Uh, some of those sub skills are always going to be on the lower side at, you know, it, in, in the middle school time period. And that's what we build upon. But, uh, you know, just overall, though, like, like I mentioned here at the end of my section. That the kids that, that are learning, they're learning at a faster pace than, than what other kids around, around the country are learning. Uh, the ones, the kids that will, you know, that, that, that tier three or just that tier one, tier two and two, three kids from, from eighth grade. They're actually showing the fastest growth, uh, with, which is just a great kudos here. And an example of that is. Um, our eighth grade reading, uh, was right at like that forty-nine percentile in regards to just. Barely keeping up, if not falling a little bit behind last year, uh, in regards to their reading and their start reading. Now, now that they're, they're eleven points over that norm, which is one of the highest. So, you know, there, there are always those, those little things here. And those are the, the things that we are focusing on is what, what can we control to kind of build, build our kids up? And you know, not only just to raise these scores, but just to, to help make them, uh, more prepared and more successful when they get off to their freshman year in high school as well. If that's what, yeah, it doesn't matter. Hit the buttons. I'm adding. The, a lot of the teachers gave feedback that their vocabulary, a lot of vocabulary and context of the English language is where they saw a lot of students struggle. So, uh, it could be, um, a lot of the connotations, um, understanding similar denotative meanings, fancy gaudy, having to differentiate between those two. Um, some of the similes and metaphors you might see in English, they found that students really, some students really struggling on that, especially if they weren't a native speaker. Um, and it was becoming more and more difficult. Um, and they had to make some of those vocabulary pieces they weren't accessing, if that makes sense.
Um, and then I just had one follow up. Um, with this data, do we know, um, like what percentage of kids are the same? So like, do we, we obviously are getting influx of students. It doesn't sound like as many students are leaving. But are these the same kids that took the test in the fall that took it in the winter?
Thank you. Uh, we're, we're still getting some kids trickling in here, but, um, really that, that influx, you know, that, the major part of the influx came in, in, in August, kind of that, that late July time. So. Now, now these are the kids that we, we have had and, you know, with the exception of a handful, um, you know, moving forward here. So. You know, hey, we, we invite all the, you know, kids that want to, you know, that live in our district, that want to, want to attend West Oak here, we want to be able to have them. And. And, you know, I think, um, just that the good publicity that we've had here over the last year has really, uh, encouraged some kids, maybe that maybe have. Uh, attended a private school setting to, to come over and, uh, and to join us at West Oak, which is, which is excellent as well.
That's great. I just wanted to echo everyone else's thing. Cause I think this is really probably the most comprehensive. Um, picture of kind of student achievement data that we've seen, at least since I've joined the board. And it's really helpful to see. The special ed piece incorporated and to also see the dual language piece incorporated, because those are two programs I think that we hear about more in isolation than seeing that. You know, it's kind of a comprehensive picture. So really thank you to you and, uh, all of you and all of your staffs too.
I just want to make one comment. Thank you to the board. Um, oh, I'm sorry, Nikki, did you have a question?
I do, yeah. All right. So with our tier system, like as we see more kids move out of tier three and two into tier one. Um, has there been any discussion about changing the, the, the percentile for tier one? Like what would qualify for tier one and maybe further, um, separating that group?
Uh, definitely it will be very exciting to see more students in tier one to be able to do that. And. Part of the advantage of standard space report cards too, is when you see those students that hit a through a level three, even a level four, beginning to. Talk about what does competency based education look like? So, uh, in terms of discussion, that's our, that's really our next step. And the standards based conversation is how do we, what does competency base look like in schools? Uh, especially K five, how do we support students that are, that need the enrichment and, uh, tier two and three in the same classroom? And so. Um, the, the principals have been very creative about pushing, which has been very effective to allow for even grouping in the classroom. Of students that are, we can group them heterogeneously, we'll group them homogenously as well. To, um, work with students for acceleration, if that makes sense. But it's, we have an M T S S committee. We started this year. And our M T S S manual, we finished this spring. And one of those elements is. Every year we would like to look at our data and ask if we need to re-norm it to move to like forty percentile, whatever it may be. And what we'll do is to the point, um, that John asked earlier is we'll use the percentages. To play with where we think is a good natural fall line for some of that. So we'd love to be able to do that. That'd be a great sign. Uh, when we're, we're moving in a direction we can get really excited about, we already. And hopefully we're taking the steps to continue to get to a place like that. That'd be a dream come true if we could re-norm, uh, and move some of those percentiles.
Well, I'd just like to take a quick minute. Um, first of all, thank you, district leadership team for a, putting the time, the effort and the thought. And we've practiced a lot over the past month, sharing and discussing and presenting this, um, internally. So it's. Great to see the final outcome. Thank you, board for recognizing our efforts and supporting the efforts. Because similar to what John said, what resources, but you've given us all the resources to get the outcomes that you see here today. Not only just with staff and with coaching and it, but with interventions and the after school support. Um, and just maintaining our leadership team. But this is a story that's, you know, taken place over eight years. So. Again, thank you for your leadership and involvement, but I can honestly say, um, it's taken us eight years and we're still growing and we're still moving. But we're at a point where there's focused leadership, um, on the data, on student growth, on learning. We have the tools in place to monitor the data and to evaluate it and watch it grow. And we've got the coaching and the leadership internally to train teachers because. They know their kids and now they know where their kids are at and they can pinpoint them and they own that and they take pride in it. And sitting in on. Uh, all the data meetings, um, teachers, that contributes to the positive culture and climate too. Yes, it's amazing. We have super sparkle as you see with our diamond awards. But I think when you really get down to it and people roll up their sleeves and they actually see that what they're doing is making a difference in the positive direction. Um, that contributes a lot to our culture and climate. So again, thank you. Thank you. I couldn't be more proud of what we heard and saw tonight. And I look forward to continue at seeing, moving forward in the right direction.
Great. Thank you. Um, that concludes our presentations. And now we move on to our business agenda for the evening. Um. The first item up is the omnibus vote agenda, which is just for review. And we will, um, take a vote on that at our next meeting in February. The next item up on the agenda is personnel. Um, and we're going to take action on this item. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one new hire and one resignation. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Beckford? Mr. Candelara?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Halman?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Great. That motion is approved. Um, moving on to our last item on the business agenda for the evening, which is, um, approving the release of executive session minutes. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake District Seventy Six Board of Education approves the release of closed session minutes from board meetings held between August twenty twenty-two and November twenty twenty-two. The list of executive session minutes is as follows. August ninth, twenty twenty-two, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, September sixth, twenty twenty-two, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um, may that, I have a motion to approve the release of those minutes.
Um, Mr. Candelas?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan? Ms. Bayless? Yes. Mr. Becker?
Yeah.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Halton?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is also approved. And that concludes our business agenda for the evening. Uh, moving on to board discussion.
So we just got a few items. Um, we have decided on, or finalized, I should say, the date of our board education, a board of education retreat and training. Um, we will follow up with ISB. We sent a tentative, um, invite for all of you to hold that on your calendars. It'll be from five to eight. So I wanted to just see, um, I know there was that equity, diversity and inclusion training that we have to take, but are there any other topics or anything else that you'd like to see or hear or learn about, um, during this retreat?
Sure. I think it, it might be useful just to get if we, if there's any kind of legal update on anything that's changing um, for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, whether that's special ed policies, which always seem to be changing, or anything else, I think that would be helpful just so we could, um, see that and kind of hear about anything new.
Okay. And our second, uh, update or board other is our board discussion item is our summer project update. Finally, we get to hear from Mr. Rogers. Go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you. Been very anxious tonight. So, uh, so some of twenty twenty-three projects are, are pretty well underway right now. Chris and I have been working, uh, pretty diligently on, um, developing a plan in place, mostly this, the projects are going to involve the School of Alliance Prevention Program grant that we're awarded. There's just around four thousand dollars. So we have an aging camera system here in the district that just doesn't like, uh, lacks the capabilities that a kind of a modern system, uh, needs. So we're, uh, myself, Mr. Hanson and, uh, Chris Tibodar are going through a valid process right now on, uh, camera manufacturers, what exactly we need and just what is out there is changing every week, I feel like. So there's a lot of nice capabilities the district can utilize with, uh, not only adding some more cameras to some blind spots, having high resolution, the ability to read license plates if necessary. So this is kind of some spot cameras that we're gonna, we're gonna need here just to help us, um, have a full three sixty, uh, view of the district. To go along with the School of Alliance Prevention Program grant, there's some interior, uh, door replacements, some re-keen projects. This is going to really just help us have a modernized system, uh, protecting our building envelope. And then exterior lighting, all the parking lot lights are very, uh, aged. So we're going to be replacing all those at Diamond Lake and West Oak campus. Uh, there was also another thing that we received is the fifty fifty maintenance grant. So that's, we're responsible for fifty thousand, they give us fifty thousand, uh, to do some masonry repairs, chimney here, some just tuck pointing around the building. And at, um, West Oak Campus again, there's some kind of outdoor classroom-ish, outdoor learning space improvements we're looking to do on the intermediate side. And then also just do some, uh, overall beautification with the playgrounds, add some benches, the soccer field, add some more seating for people. Uh, kind of just replace, we had those broken, um, wooden benches that we were, that we tore out last year. So we're going to replace those with some permanent fixtures. Um, and then there's just some service road and staff, uh, restroom updates we're going to be doing. So, uh, the intention is to have this out to bid in the next couple of weeks here. We'll bring a kind of a little bit more thorough analysis of what exactly our scope and sequence is for these projects um, around March, and then we'll look for approval to finish these in summer. So a little bit smaller, uh, summary we have here, but it's, it's nice that we get, uh, the predominant amount of funding, uh, to get these from the federal government.
Sorry, our next update, um, you've probably read it in our weekly update. Um, but the full service community school grant that, uh, Ms. Carrera was working on along with Round Lake, um, and the Lake County, Lake County College, as well as their, um, community service grant, we missed it by four points. So unfortunately, we weren't able to get it. And I know all of, some of you, um, completed a survey um, that were requested to do that, not only as board members, but also as, uh, parents. So we just want to let you know, but she continues to work with them. And if other opportunities are available, um, they're gonna, we hope to be considered for that. So I just wanted to make it official, even though it's not the news we wanted. But we appreciated everybody who, uh, participated in that survey to give us that feedback. And then the last item is the ISB Lake Region Dinner Meeting is going to be held on March eighth at six P M. I believe Mrs. Sullivan and I are the only two attendees at this point. But if you'd like to attend, please just let, um, Hiram know and we will get you registered.
Okay, that wraps up board discussion. Um, moving on to FOIA requests, we had two, both were fulfilled. Um, for notices and communications, we have the agenda for the SEDOL governing board meeting on March first. Um, John, are you going to attend that?
I wanted to bring that up. Unfortunately, I am going to be flying back from a work trip
Okay.
that evening. So, uh, if somebody else would like to, um, attend, I know that, I mean, they need a quorum.
Right. Okay. Does anyone else know offhand that they are able to attend that night?
I can. I don't exactly know what entails, but I
Okay.
we can talk about what I need to do or what I
Yeah, I'm sure John can value it, just basically because he's kind of been our representative this sort of the last couple of years. Okay, cool. That would be great.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
David. Okay, um, then the next item is D seventy-six highlights, and we have a lot of really great things.
All right. So we had, um, two spelling bees, um, this past month at the middle school, as well as the intermediate school. So you can see our winners and our runner-up who will represent us at, um, the Lake County level. And then we, um, had the Dare to Dream Conference that Ms. Carrera took, um, several of our girls to, as well as their parents. And then we had another little diamond that was born. I believe he was born, I'm just clicking on it right now. Um, is it a New Year's Eve baby? Okay, yes, New Year's Eve baby. He said he was trying, because that's why I couldn't remember. But they were trying to be the first baby in the hospital, but she came early. So, um, congratulations to Mr. Sherwood. I know. You know, that's a good way of looking at it. And lastly, our January moment of the month. We had our first snowfall, so our West Oak Intermediate School students were selected from the pictures that were given throughout district-wide of being the moment of the month playing in the snow.
Great.
Yes. And that is all that we have.
Okay. Um, moving on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments or petitions this evening? Um, we no longer have an audience here, so if you are joining us virtually, please feel free to, um, add your comments to the chat box and we will read them into the meeting. We'll give you a second to do that. Okay, it does not look like we have any public comments. Um, so moving on to others, do we have any others this evening? Looks like that is a no. Okay, um, then we do not have anything for executive session this evening. So we will move to adjourn. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Yes.
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 Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.